Allegiance. In honor of all the wonderful and beautiful graduations we have, and really for most anybody else that can maybe relate to this, I have a just a quick little saying, different roads sometimes lead to the same castle. And that's by George Martin or George R. R. Martin from A Game of Thrones. Which, you know, I didn't watch, but anyway. At this time, I'd like to also excuse Erin Markwart and Rick Hendricks, who is in North Dakota. With his family and his mother. Approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent items. There are sixteen of them. So I, I'm probably not going to read them all, but they are available for anybody to, to read. So do I have a motion to accept the consent items as listed? And including that, are all the generous, generous donations we've received? Do I have a motion to accept that?
Second.
Okay, you got it. All those in favor? Oh, discussion, yeah. All those in favor? After, you can have a discussion too.
I just wanted to say that I thought it was really neat to see all the donations, appreciate the PTAs and what they do for our district. Also, the hiring of a bowling coach. That's pretty exciting to see. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but just the fact that we're able to approve that and bring in a new activity for our students is really cool.
I was gonna say, thanks for all the PTAs. Let me just, some of these people probably don't realize the numbers. I think one of them was seventy-nine hundred dollars. One was like almost thirty-one hundred or close. Another one was twenty-three thousand. So these are PTAs that have raised money to donate to buy playground equipment, security apparatuses for doors at their elementary school. So we live in a very generous community with good hearts and good pocketbooks. Thank you.
Well, and speaking of PTAs, we have Janelle Hizzy, who is the president of the Tali Heights PTA, and their donation is on the consent agenda for just over, I think it's just over twenty-six thousand dollars, twenty, twenty-three thousand. So that's the twenty-three thousand. So Janelle, thank you for all, that's, that's a lot of hard work to raise that much money. Jennifer, thank you for being here. Everybody just likes hanging out at board meetings. I'm telling you, it's the place to be, so.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, motion carries. This time we have superintendent comments with Dr. Dent.
Yeah, so a lot to celebrate, and we're gonna kick it off the right way with Jelena Hardkey, our principal at Liberty Ridge, who is here to announce our new assistant principal that will be joining her next year. Well, actually, July first, but like next school year. So when you're an educator, that's all you think about. It's like, that's how the year starts.
Well, good evening, board members and Dr. Dent and all in attendance. I am so excited to introduce our new assistant principal of Liberty Ridge, Sarah Thompson, who is joining us from the White River School District.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here and work in the community that I live in and get to meet the staff and students next week, so I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. I talked to Scott today and said, thanks, sorry, but Scott's the superintendent at White River, but we're really excited that Sarah is joining our team, and it's a great school. I might be a little biased, but you know, love that school, so. Next up, Steve Sholand, executive director of secondary. Is Tammy here? Where she, did she sneak in? There you are in the back. This is awesome. I mean, this is like, super cool.
This is awesome, and actually, I'm gonna share the stage with a few people. So if I could ask, Catherine Elliott, our instructional services TOSA, as well as Amy Montgomery, principal at Mountain View, and Ms. Tammy Notehelfer, come on up, you're enjoying me. I'll be honest, I was prepared to share with you about the award that we're going to recognize here tonight. And I walked in here, and Ms. Elliott is here. Ms. Elliott has been out on maternity leave. Ms. Elliott is here tonight, and she is actually the one who wrote the nomination for Tammy Notehelfer. So I'm gonna hand it off to Catherine, and I think it's a great opportunity for you to also to meet Catherine, who was added to our secondary IS team for the school year.
Thank you for, I'm actually stealing Steve Sholand's words. He wrote this, and then he saw me, so this is Steve Sholand. But Tammy, being in my new role of secondary TOSA, Tammy has been instrumental in helping me learn our intervention programs. And so that's why we nominated her as a team to be our lighthouse nominee, and then she won, so that was exciting. So, good evening, superintendent Dent and members of the board. I appreciate your time tonight and very much look forward to sharing with you another heartwarming story from another great school in our district, Mountain View Middle School. As you may recall, over the past years, Steve has presented to the board about the intervention classes we have in our middle and high schools. Tonight, we have the opportunity to highlight one of our many tremendous intervention teachers. So this past March, we had a data review meeting with our representatives from Hope Mifflin. That's the company that develops our ELA intervention, the System 44 and Read 180. And to say the least, it was impressive. So overall student growth, the pace students are demonstrating, and the great job schools were doing identifying students in need of classes like this, all of the data was looking great. Maybe a day or two later, we were contacted by Hope Mifflin, which is a national people, and asked to nominate a teacher for a new award. The award is the HMH Lighthouse Award. The lighthouse reference is to Stephen Pemberton's book, The Lighthouse Effect, a collection of true stories of ordinary people, human lighthouses, who made extraordinary impacts on our students in the world. So ten award winners from across the US are provided with a paid trip to the 2023 Model Schools Conference in Orlando, along with a visit from the author and one of the people featured in his book, Carmen Ortiz McGee. So among many stars, Tammy Notehelfer has demonstrated great skill in how she sets up her classes, the culture she creates, and the growth her students make. She has become well-known to our trainer, who has passed Tammy's name along to teachers in other districts in other states. And Tammy has made her many resources widely available to staff within our district and elsewhere. So tonight, we are here to introduce, recognize, and congratulate Tammy Notehelfer, our very own recipient to the inaugural HMH Lighthouse Award. So we have a certificate of excellence as well as a coin of excellence. So congratulations. Thank you for everything you do for our students.
Hold on. And so some of you might know this, Tammy was on Good Day Seattle, like, not too long ago, and Deb and I were, we actually had to be there when Tammy was given this award. And it was like this magical moment, because this is a big deal. I mean, we have a national winner right here that, that has done, I know, you're a big deal. And this is amazing, because you have done such amazing things with kids who oftentimes become invisible in our classrooms. And you've given them a voice, and you've given them purpose, and you've given them, most importantly, a connection. You've taken them from a place where it was probably pretty dark for them, and you've used that lighthouse in a way to shine hope in their life. We appreciate you and the hard work that it takes. Being an intervention teacher is, is no joke. That is all heart, so thank you. We thank you. Do you want to say anything? Because every time you do, you just inspire me even more. Have you ever heard her speak? I mean, Kurt has probably plenty of times, but yeah, of course, yeah. Hey Kurt, by the way, nice to see you.
I would say he never gives me the pulpit, but.
There you go.
I, I just loved getting to talk to my kids about their hard work. Their work was in the five top, the top five to 10% of the nation. That wasn't my work, that was their work. And so in our little community of Sumner Bonnie Lake, we have kids who are in the top five to 10% in the nation. And for them to hear that meant something. And they were squealing and excited, and I said, I need, we need to take pictures. And so I came the next day with my camera, and this one little girl, she's so darling, she said, I had been waiting for the entire night for this moment. And I, and she goes, do you see what I'm wearing? And I was like, absolutely. She had a little black stocking cap on, and a little black shirt, and a little black jacket, and black jeans, and black socks, and black shoes, and I said, you're fancy. And she said, I know. Anyway, just getting to celebrate with them, we took pictures outside, we took pictures inside, we took selfies. And then they wanted to do testimonials, and I said, let's do videos. So we did videos, and they talked about how System 44 and Read 180 has changed their life. And this one little boy said, I can now break apart all of the sounds in the word. And then, when I see those parts in other words, I can put them back together again, and I never could do that before. Yeah. So I guess I just want to say that's really their award. And then I got to be a little lighthouse shining in the light, so that people could see that there was an island there, full of these amazing kids, doing incredible things. And then, just, you know, when they asked me what it meant to win, I said, it means that my everyday, ordinary life counts for something. And so I would just say that to you, you know, sometimes you get up in the morning, you're just like going through the motions, you're thinking, and why am I doing this? Or what am I doing? Or what does this day even hold, you know? But our ordinary, everyday moments are noticed. People see the good work that you're doing, and it counts for something. And you're amazing. So thank you for honoring me, but thank you mostly for recognizing that our kids have an opportunity now to see themselves for who they are.
Okay, so let's go from the national stage to the state level stage. And Brian, I think you're gonna have to maybe answer some of those questions about bowling. But Brian Kaelin, our director of athletics, is here to recognize some, some additional incredible students.
Thank you, Dr. Dent, board of directors. As you know, it's season of celebrations, and we've already talked a little about that tonight. You know, we have graduations, assemblies, many other events highlighting the achievements of our students. And so we will be continuing that theme tonight by honoring Sumner Bonnie Lake School District student athletes and a team that won WI State Championships during the just completed 22-23 WI Sports Season. I'd like to note, though, that though we're focusing on, on state champions tonight, we have many other student athletes and many other programs that had amazing seasons as well, led by our outstanding coaches, which we have amazing coaches. So a summary of these achievements can be found in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District newsletters each season, so that goes out to everyone. So just wanted to mention that, because we have, you know, we have great athletes and coaches here tonight, we also have a lot of other ones, so. Getting back to the state champions, though, not many student athletes can say they've won a state championship, and no, I couldn't. So today, state championship honorees didn't win state titles from just the work they put in this season. They've spent many years putting in countless hours of work and making sacrifices. This hard work and sacrifice, along with guidance from their coaches, support from their families, friends, and community helped them to achieve the ultimate goal of any high school athlete, and that's winning a state championship. So I think if you ask any of our athletes, that would probably be their ultimate goal as a high school athlete. So we'll be honoring tonight five individuals and one team that earned WI State Championships. And we'll start by honoring Bonnie Lake Track and Field Athlete Cooper Wilson. Unfortunately, Cooper isn't able to be here tonight, I don't think. I don't think Cooper snuck in. So, because he has family events, because he recently graduated from Bonnie Lake High School, so he has a lot going on. But Cooper's head coach, Andy Foster, shared the following about Cooper. So Coach, Coach Foster said this, Cooper Wilson was a first-year track and field athlete. He went undefeated in the Pierce County League in the 100-meter, 200-meter, and 400-meter events. He was also league and West Central District Champion in all three events. Cooper competed in these events at state where he placed third in the 200 and ninth in the 400. He won his state championship in the 100-meter with a winning time of 10.91 seconds, which is really fast if you're a track person. I can't even fathom. So not even Dr. Matt ran that fast back in his day, I don't think, but. Cooper is a Bonnie Lake High School record holder in all of these events as well. Cooper will continue his athletic endeavors at the University of Nebraska, where he will be a preferred walk-on in football. Out of my 33 years of coaching track and field, Cooper is one of the most gifted athletes that I have coached. I'm very proud of this young man. And again, that's from Coach Foster. So congratulations to Cooper, although he's not here tonight. We'll be handing out certificates. So the next state championship athletes are for the Sumner High School Wrestling Program. They are Elias McDonald and Cody Miller. Their head coach, Matt Harshman, who, by the way, is the Washington State Wrestling Coaches Association Coach of the Year, as voted on by his peers, will come up and introduce them and provide some additional information about them. And bring them up. So, Mr. Harshman.
All right, um, thank you again for having us tonight. I'm Matt Harshman, so I'm the head wrestling coach at Sumner High School, and I want to recognize these two, so Elias McDonald over there on your right, and Cody Miller. These two athletes are just phenomenal wrestlers. And I could have told you a few years ago, when I watched them in the Little Youth Wrestling, and my son was part of that program, and I watched them win their Pierce County Wrestling League titles and, and watched the relationships they had with each other at that time. And if I go back in time, I would not be surprised to see what they've accomplished in high school. Their freshman year, they started in the COVID year, where we didn't have a state championship that year, and they dominated the competition that was put in front of them. And then their sophomore year, they both wrestled well and ended up winning a state championship at the end of their sophomore year. And they continued that this last year, and they're both juniors, winning their, their second state titles. And that run has been accomplished, not because of their wrestling skills or not, because of their wrestling abilities. The values that these two athletes have as people, that they've learned from their families, learned from all their other coaches, all the other adults and friends in their lives, have really shown, because each wrestler had a ton of challenges or obstacles they had overcome. And they've excelled in the highest moments of our sport. And I truly believe that wrestling is the most challenging sport in the world. There's nothing that compares to the sport and the things they're asked to do. And these two have been asked to do the most challenging things, and they've never complained, they've never questioned it, they've always excelled and done their best and put their best foot forward. And they're recognized with the result of having two state championships for Sumner High School. And I think we gotta give them a lot of credit for the work they've put in, the work they're gonna put in for their high school wrestling career, and then beyond, because I, I think this is a small part of what they're gonna accomplish. They're gonna do amazing things, and this is just gonna be a fun story for them, because they have a lot more potential outside of the wrestling room and outside of just earning a state championship. And that's why their Sumner High School's only two back to their state championships and our state champion winners. And they're amazing to be around and just to get to know them. So thank you two for letting me coach you and be a part of your journey. And thank you to you guys, just being this great community, allowing these athletes to really thrive and excel with the support that we have here. So that's all I got, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Harshman. Thank you, Mr. Harshman. Next up is Sumner gymnast Madison Sorenson. And again, unfortunately, Madison is not with us this evening either, unless she snuck in, so I'm gonna turn it over to her head coach, who you've already met, Catherine Elliott, who is in attendance tonight, so Catherine will say a few words.
Hello again. Um, coaching gymnastics was, I was hired in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District as the gymnastics coach, and then I've kind of worked my way up, so this is my passion, I love it. There's no better place in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, I truly believe that. Um, side note. So Madison is a junior this year, and it was her first year on the team, because if you're a club gymnast, you can't join the high school gymnastics team. So she quit the club and came to the Sumner High School gymnastics team with all of her friends and all the girls that she used to do gymnastics with. And it really paid off for her. So we got third at state as a team for the second year in a row, which is a huge deal. The same two schools always get first and second, so really third place is state championship. But she was the SPSL West Central District, and then third at state on the vault. And then she was the SPSL West Central District and state champion for the floor exercise. So she just kind of rocked that podium from start to finish. And then we also, this is not for Madison, but we also had an assistant coach of the year at the state level. So our assistant coach was voted on by the Coaches Association, and it was just a super successful season, not just because of Madison, but because of the team as a whole. So obviously, she has a great piece to it, but we really try to focus on the team. So congratulations to Madison. I can't wait to see what she does next year as a senior. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach Elliott. And our last state champions to be recognized this evening are from the Sumner High School Boys Golf Program. Ryan Takashita won the four A individual state championship, and the team won Sumner's first-ever golf state championship. Yeah, that's definitely worth some applause, so. So again, busy time of year, the kids couldn't be here tonight, but we do have Sumner's golf coaches, Dustin Haggy and Jay Johnston. They're gonna come up and say a few words about the golf team. They should say more than a few words after a state championship, so we'll see.
Yeah, I guess I'll be the one who says a few words. So first off, again, this is not our award, it's more so for the boys. Unfortunately, it's hard to pin down all five of them. One of our seniors is already over in Pullman to play football. We got lucky to have him this year, just with the season flipping to spring, so we got an extra year out of him, which was nice. But we have a great nucleus of kids on this team. They're pretty young, we're only losing two guys. Last year, we finished third in state. Quick story, one of our kids on the team took that third-place finish and put it in his room, because it wasn't, wasn't up to par. So he looked at that all year and kind of used that as fuel for this year. The boys finished nine and O in league. Most of our JV kids beat, as their team, as a JV, beat the varsity kids on pretty much everybody's squad besides maybe one. So they finished nine and O, went to league, won the league tournament by forty-seven. Went on to districts, we were missing one of, if not our best player, he was competing in a national event, so he wasn't there. Ended up beating Bellerman in that one, too, to edge them out in districts, which is a big deal. And then moved on to state, where, as Brian mentioned, Ryan Takashita took home the individual title, he's a sophomore. So we'll have him for a couple more years, which is great, and then obviously, the team took home the state title, which is really exciting. Can't really speak highly enough of not only their golf, but just the kids that we have. They do a really good job with, including incoming freshmen, helping, you know, get them acclimated to the golf team. All the support that we get from their families, and obviously, the school and parents and community and everything is fantastic. This is my second year as a coach, obviously, I look forward to doing this for hopefully more years to come. And couldn't do it without my assistant over here, as I'm traveling for work events, can't be two places at once, so this guy's gotta help me out. But yeah, again, thank you. This is a pretty, pretty cool thing, and as Brian mentioned, you know, congrats to the other state champs, this is something that you guys will hopefully look back on, and not many people get to say they're state champions, so, and I myself am not one either. So again, congrats to the boys, unfortunately, they can't be here, but I'm sure they would say thank you to everybody for all the support, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, coaches. And again, one thing that always comes up is it takes everybody, it takes the coaches, it takes the student athletes, it takes the community, it takes the board. And it goes back to our promise, you know, to know value and support all of our kids, and you know, this is, athletics are a great, great way to do that. So I just want to thank you, board of directors and Dr. Dent, for allowing us to present tonight. And again, thank you to all the student athletes and your coaches for all your hard work. And, you know, there's a lot left to come, because you got not, a lot of you, the ones that are here, you got next year, and you got beyond that. So I wish you all the best, and we look forward to watching you next year, so thank you.
Okay, next we have the board member comments, and I'll start with you, Kevin.
Okay. I just wanted to comment tonight on some recent activities, a busy time of year for everybody. But first, I wanted to talk, say congratulations to the staff that are retiring this year. Big shout out to them and their years of service with the district. They will be, of course, very much missed. I would also like to point out, in our consent that we voted on tonight, there were a lot of new hires that we're bringing on, which is great to fill some big shoes, I'm sure. I'll point out a couple that I think are very crucial to some of the feedback we're getting from the public, which is, we've got a bus driver that came into the fold as a new hire, new custodian, new grounds technician. So all of those areas that we've been working to fill in on our, on, on tonight's vote that was already voted on, so that was great. Myself, I've been attending many events, because there's a lot going on, and I won't hit all of them, because I know all of us have been going to them as well. But I wanted to highlight the, the great scholarship nights that both Sumner High School and Bonnie Lake High School put on, and to just see the awards that the students are winning, to head off into, to college vocational, was just phenomenal to see so many great students. And then I was fortunate to attend the Bonnie Lake High School Part of a Panther Night, which is just really cool to see them honor people and students that, from every club and from every sport, that embody their, you know, their, their, what they stand for at Bonnie Lake. And it was just a really cool event to see, so I'll stop there and talk about some of the other events.
It's always hard to go after Kevin, because he's well-spoken, and he has a better memory than me. We went to so many events past, over this last month for celebrations, I can't remember them all, really. I need a list, and I didn't prepare one. So I'm just gonna talk about one of my favorite ones, and that is community-based graduation. It's held in this room, and it's for our students that are eighteen to twenty-one. This is the first year I didn't cry. It, it really is that moving, to see these kids work so hard, they're so excited. And their parents and grandparents come down, and their brothers and sisters, and this year, there was four of them. Other years, there's been a lot more. That's always a touching one. So going back to the scholarships, I was kind of, just to put it into perspective, at graduation the other day, Bonnie Lake High School had over a million dollars in scholarships given to the students, and Sumner High School had over two million dollars given in scholarships to the students. And, you know, that's what we're here for, is not necessarily the scholarships, but to get kids across the stage with good quality academic core learning. And, you know, with enough self-esteem that they can go tackle the world and know that they're gonna make a difference. So that's that, and then I just want to give us a very short report, because I know people are interested in our proposed 3203 prohibition against racial and ethnic harassment. We met at the beginning of the month, our meetings are typically the first Monday of every month at nine o'clock. Again, we go through a lot of different policies, we only really have like an hour a month, and then we kind of divide it up and pack them and bring them back the following month. This one, I think, is getting really close. We only talked about one sentence that needed to be adjusted, and that was the last sentence. So that we don't duplicate discipline procedures, we want to make sure it's one discipline for this policy, as well as the harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So we need to tighten up that last sentence, and it will basically read more like it will follow harassment, bullying, and intimidation policy. So that, hopefully, the correction will be done, we'll review it again. I think our next one is going to be right before, at 5 o'clock, right before the July meeting. So hopefully, at that point, we'll have it at what we consider to be the 90% level. And then the administration can start taking it to the other administrators, the principals, and people that will need to use this to try to combat what's taking place with some of the students out there. Get feedback. I think your team's going to take it to some students, or actually, I think the principals will probably have some good students in mind to provide feedback. And then community input. And then it'll come back again. I think the target is still in this fall, hopefully before the school year starts. But then we can have it to a position where we can get it out for first read. So that's the update.
Thanks, Paul. When I look back at the graduations, I've been going to them for, not including my own children, but for over 10 years. And why I mention this is that although our president Erin is not available tonight, her two youngest children graduated from Bonnie Lake High School. And why I bring this up, the first time I met them, they were little second graders on the floor. And then all of a sudden, they're graduating, and that's how fast time goes by. And I must say that over the 10 years, I've gone to the, you know, as a different hat, not being a parent, I never get tired of that celebration and that excitement and tears. And kids hugging you and maybe shaking your hands too hard, because they're so nervous. And it's a thrilling moment for all of us, because this is why we're here, is to get those kids across the stage. And truly loved it. But one thing I, other than graduations, that I really enjoyed that I wanted to share with you was that I went to the garden party at Emerald Hills. And I wasn't too sure what to expect, waiting for some tea or whatever. But it was really interactive. There was the art show there. There was just a lot of variety of things. But what really stood out to me was the actual gardens. That's why they called it the garden party. And spent a lot of time talking to the young woman who is in charge of this garden. As it turns out, students can't wait to go out there to weed, which is, I could never get my own kids to do that. But they learn, it's so interactive. They learn the history of seeds, both ethically, where they come from, as well as, you know, horticulturally wise. So it's not just the students, though. They got so many parent volunteers that were coming in on the weekends and just very engaged. They got community donations. Community members would come in. Dump trucks of topsoil would come in. And I just thought that was just a great learning tool. And I was thinking it would be just so great if all the elementary schools had that. As it turns out, several of them do have that. Liberty Ridge, I saw, they were filling up their sort of areas that they were preparing for a garden. And just kind of a hope that someday that all of them have room to do that, because I thought it was pretty amazing. So that is my end of that. Next, we're going to go into, pardon me?
I want to give one more shout out.
Okay.
My shout out goes out to our Eli Hill High School. If you're not familiar, just right down across the street over here. And it's a really good program that was started in our district to help help the students that were behind towards graduation credits. Because once you get behind in that, it's really hard to make that time up. I mean, every single school day of the year counts when you get into high school. And so the, you know, the point of bringing Eli Hill is to help those students. And it has grown so much that at their graduation this year, they had 55 graduates go through that building. And that's 55 out of 57. And the reason I point out the two that didn't graduate is that they will continue on in the fall and graduate in the fall. So this program that started with, you know, less than five students when it first started, now is graduating upwards of 55 students. That's 55 students that would have dropped out in our community. And so I just want to give a big shout out to the staff in that building. They pour their heart and soul into it, and they embrace those kids like family. And you can see it at the graduation, and I just thought it was really phenomenal.
Thanks for adding that, Kevin. I think at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. For those of you that would like to stick around, you can certainly stick around. And those of you who do go do something else, you're welcome to do that. Thank you. Dr. Amen. Oh, never mind. Okay, we're ready to commence. Okay, at this time, I will have David Bauer go ahead with the audience comments.
Next, we're moving on to the audience comments portion of the meeting. The board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not receive action at a future meeting. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and understand these guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. The board will not respond to comment, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous, professional, and refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designee interrupting or ending the comment. The audience comment process is as follows. Speakers who registered by noon yesterday will be heard. If you are providing an in-person public comment when your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name. Please address comments to the board, school board as a whole. Individuals will have three minutes to speak, and I will signal you with the bell when there's one minute remaining. Our first audience comment this evening is Teresa McLeimans.
I didn't think I signed up that early. So hopefully, I'm not the only one. Anyway, thank you. My name's Teresa McLeimans, and I live in Bonnie Lake, and I thank you for the opportunity to just talk. You know, it's a good thing that the public can do that. I just want to say that I really didn't plan to say anything, because I've been really busy this last few weeks. So today, I just want to comment on the meeting so far. How lovely, how positive, how wonderful. Kudos to the harassment, bullying, and inner, inner what? Intimidation policy. It sounds like it's really a well-rounded, including all, it sounds like it's common sense of character, of good character. And if you don't have the good character and respect and love towards people, there's a disciplinary procedure. And it sounds like it's not based on anything but the human race, you know? Kindness that guys and gals and, you know, everybody can adhere to and know exactly what to expect. So I appreciate that policy, and I look forward to seeing it as it continues. I like how you also have the feedback of the staff and the students and then the community. And I'd love to know how to be involved in that community type of thing, because it's worthy to review. Also, the reading program that was there, the intervention teaching, oh, how important. One of the aspects, I think it was, they said System 44. It sounds like learning the basics of reading, the deciphering of words. So important, you know? And if you miss that, how critical that is. You know, then if you don't get to know how to read by the third grade, it's kind of like, oh, you know how, we just kind of push them all along. So I encourage how, as being one of those kids that was a late bloomer, and then every teacher in the school system thought I knew how to read. Actually, I didn't. I faked it a lot. And I came along bad, some good, really bad habits. And I didn't learn really how to read efficiently until my first year in college, because I humbled myself to go to a 101 kind of learn-how-to-read thing, because I couldn't get done with a 101 business test soon enough, because there's too much reading. I was like, ah! And the teacher was just like, you come with me, and he marched me up there. So I just encouraged all the teachers, everyone, to have a policy that doesn't allow one child to slip through the cracks. So that's about it.
Our next audience comment is Terry McCoy.
Thank you. The groan was because I am so not ready, just like Teresa. I thank all of you for being here, and, oh, there's who I am. Hi, my name is Terry McCoy, and I've been in the Sumner-Bonnie Lake School District for 45 years. Our youngest daughter graduated from Sumner High School in 2001. So that gives you a little bit of clue how old I am. But anyway, I'm speaking tonight not only to you folks, and thank you for being here again, but my heart is breaking regarding the parents in our school district and the community members that aren't aware of things that are going on, good and bad. And thank you for all the positive comments and review of the good things, the right things that are going on. That's what keeps me coming back to these meetings each month, is because I get to learn some things that I'm just clueless about, you know? And not necessarily shame on me, because there's so many things going on. But I'm very thankful to hear about the awards and the progress and the things that are happening in our district that make us very special, in a good way. So where's the clock? Where'd the clock go? We used to have a clock up. Okay. Oh, dear. Okay. So my main question is, for all of us, when do we stop being a parent? Oh, okay. Thank you. That wasn't planned. So, and who decides if we have the right to raise our kids according to our values and beliefs or a school district or a teacher? Our school board members work really hard at, that's a minute left. Oh, my stars. This is so embarrassing. I'm glad, I'm really glad that you guys are chuckling, because I get it. So anyway. Oh, my stars. I want to encourage parents and community members to become more and more and more and more involved, because there are things that are happening that are not right and not good when parental rights are being violated. Parents are being seen as the danger person in a family, and that's not right. And I want to stand up And I want to stand up for all parents. It doesn't matter to me what your beliefs and your values are, your ethnicity, it doesn't matter to me. I want you, as a parent, to have the freedom and the liberty to raise your kids the way you believe. And so that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience comment is Troy Fullerton.
I'm another one, not prepared like everybody else. I just found out about a half hour ago, my wife told me, that I'm speaking. So anyways, I pulled out some notes, and I just wanted to let everybody know out there. Did you know, as a parent, you have the right? You have the right to not only decline an experimental vaccination, but all vaccinations? As I found out in two thousand and three, after experiencing a vaccine injury myself from a non-experimental vaccine, it's as simple as a form and a signature on the school's exemption form. So I just want to let people know that because they don't tell people this, and you don't find out until you have a vaccine injury, and then you end up losing your job and your career. And I got it back after over a decade, and I came back when all the doctors said I was not going to come back. And I came back full force for a major airline. So anyways, I just want people to know that. I also want to, let's see. Yeah, the Washington State law allows parents or guardians to exempt their child from the school or childcare immunization requirement. Exemptions may be claimed for personal, philosophical, religious, or medical reasons. And it's RCW, State of Washington, twenty-eight A, two-ten dot zero-nine-zero. So that's the exemption form. I also want to talk about the aggressive vaccine schedules that have been rolled out, which I experienced myself, and a lot of people probably know also, and they probably know of people who have been injured, especially over the last few years. Before the rollout of the experimental COVID shots, children received seventy-two doses of sixteen different vaccines by the age of eighteen. Fifty-three of those vaccines are administered before the age of six, making the vaccine schedule one of the most aggressive in the world. The number of vaccines recommended for children has tripled since nineteen eighty, and with the increase has come skyrocketing childhood disease and disability. As of more than a decade ago, upwards of fifty-four percent of American children suffer from one or more chronic illnesses. One in twelve children is disabled due to a chronic illness, and one in four takes routine medication. Statistics on specific conditions provide an equally dismal portrait. So I'm sure a lot of people out there, you know people who have been injured, and a lot of people don't talk about it, but a lot more people are talking about it these days, especially after COVID. Okay, thank you.
That concludes our audience comments for this evening.
Thank you. Before I go into our next section, which is policy matters, I also want just, for those of you that maybe not are aware that we do get written comments, and we do take all, each one of us take the time to read those. And although we, once again, can't respond to them, but we do read them, so thank you for those people, too. Policy matters. The district administration recommends the board adopt these district policies in accordance with policy number thirteen-ten, Adoption and Amendment of Policies bylaws. And we have, for those policies, we have zero-three-hundred, we have thirty-two-oh-seven, sixty-two-twenty, and thirty-two-oh-nine. Do I have a motion to accept these policies as listed?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion at this time? No? Okay, all those in favor of implementing these policies, please say.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, for information only, we have policy number thirty-two-eleven. Oh, yeah.
So this is, I get it, it's information, it's first reading. We added a sentence to this policy to inform individuals that might have a question or concern regarding student records that could go see the proper student records policy on that. So there's a note, alert, just kind of trying to be a little more transparent, so it's not down in a footnote, it's right in the policy itself.
Thank you, Paul. So information only, and they are in our packets, that's just something we can check into on our own. The next thing we have is information only, we have retired policies and procedures. And before I list those, for those of you who don't know what a P after a policy is, that means the actual procedure of the policy. So we have thirty, or excuse me, twenty-three-twelve, twenty-three-twelve P. We have the WASD thirty-one-forty-four, WASD thirty-one-forty-three. We have thirty-three-twenty-one, thirty-three-twenty-one P, thirty-two-forty-nine, thirty-two-forty-nine P. And then we have the WASD policy of thirty-four-fourteen and thirty-four-fourteen P. So just information only, if anybody wants to pursue that further. Oh, yeah, what I say. Yeah, okay. Yes, I've got my big glasses on, but apparently they don't always help me. Okay, business matters. Information only, we have the budget status report, which is also included in your package. Then we have the next under business matters, we have, we have, let's see. We have the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-six Handbook, Principal Association Handbook, and we will take action on that. The administration recommends that we do accept this. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this point? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Charmaine. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, do you want me to read that to you? Sumner-Bonnie Lake School District Superintendent Contract Recommendation, the administration recommends the board approve Dr. Lori Dent's twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-six supplemental for superintendent contract for the Sumner-Bonnie Lake School District. Roll call.
Deb Norris?
Aye.
Paul Williams?
Aye.
And the record reflects that Rick Hendrickson, Aaron Marquardt are not present today.
Thank you, Charmaine. Presentations, we have Bang Parkinson. So I'm excited that Bang is starting this topic, the levy renewal that's coming up quickly. Bang has put this together for you as just information at this point to, again, start the conversation. So Bang, thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Superintendent Dent and Board of Directors. Again, as Superintendent Dent said, that we are studying the renewal of two levy, the EPNO and the technology levy. So what is EPNO? Educational programs and operation levy. So it always remind me to talk about L and L, levy for learning and bond for building. And we always hear about these things, and it is true that this levy is pretty much for our general fund and to subsidize a lot of learning academic-related expenditure. It consists of eighteen percent of our general fund revenue. So this kind of levy, you can run actually from one to four years, not two, but you can run one year or four years for collection. And it require symbol majority, that means that fifty percent voter approval. And you can only run twice a year, calendar year. If you try the first time, you fail, you have another chance to run one more time, then you have to wait. And by the way, we talked a little bit about the levy equalization that we lost in the past several years. The last time we had collected this is one-point-two-million that we lost in the equalization. And also some change since last four years that the first time I came to Sumner-Bonnie Lake School District and I presented to the board for the four years, this is my second times for the four years EPNO. The first time that we talked about was based on the rate, the two-dollar-fifty cents per one-thousand assets value rate. And that was at the time we were eligible for that. But now we are not because of the assets value increased so much that we are no longer eligible. So there's two rule, one is either two-dollar-fifty cents per one-thousand assets value or two-thousand-five-hundred at the time as start for student count, whichever is less. So because assets value increased so much, we're no longer eligible to collect that much money. So we collect based on student count, which is much less for our revenue. Anyway, that is why we switch back to student count instead of the rate. So another levy we are talking about to renew is capital levy, we call it technology levy. Because this levy is for construction, remodel, school facility, but it also include the technology improvement, infrastructure. And it can run all the way to six years, from one to six years. And also symbol majority to pass, means that fifty percent voter approval. There's a potential mismatch of the cycle with other measures. For example, last year, my last time we run this was six year. That was way before we run the EPNO. Now it's matched the same time, the cycle matched. But if we start at this time, we run one four-year and another one six-year. By the four years, we rerun that EPNO, the tech levies still have two more years to go. So that we call mismatch of the cycle, which is fine, it just bring it up. And again, it can run twice a year. So give you a little bit background of the EPNO. Like I said, that the first time I came here, we ran four years, that was two thousand and twenty-one, and expiring in two thousand and twenty-four. At the time, we asked twenty-eight million in the first year, twenty-twenty-one, thirty-two-point-five millions in two thousand and twenty-two, and thirty-eight millions in two thousand and twenty-three, and forty-five million in two thousand and twenty-four. It's expiring in December of two thousand and twenty-four. And we are going to go out in February two thousand and twenty-four for the collection of two thousand and twenty-five. For tech levy, we ran six years, starting two thousand and nineteen until two thousand and twenty-four. It matched this EPNO expiration. And we asked at the time from four million to five-point-eight million range. And again, it's expired this year, and we are going out in February two thousand and twenty-four. So why we switch from two-dollar-fifty cents to student count? It's because of this growth. If you look at the percentage of growth for your assets value in this school district, in these five years, it's all double digits except the two thousand and twenty-one. And the last year was eighteen percent. What's that mean to us if you have the five-hundred-thousand dollars house in two thousand and twenty-two? Two thousand and twenty-three, it worth five-hundred, five-hundred-ninety-thousand dollars. It increased ninety-thousand dollars just in one year. So that's the assets value increased that much. So based on this growth, I estimate and calculate and also use the assumption of the past history. So there's two sides of this calculation. One is for two-dollar-fifty cents per one-thousand assets value. How it calculated and how much going to be if we use this rule, although we are not eligible anyway, but I just want to see the comparison of those two. And then this right side is per student count. So the first part is talking about the assets growth rate. I use three years average to be more conservative. So we generate forty-eight-point-nine in two thousand and twenty-five, fifty-six million, sixty-four million, seventy-three million. If we use that assets value, two-dollar-fifty cents per one-thousand assets value, that is what we're going to ask for the voter. However, we are not eligible for that, so we switch over to this right-sized calculation is we estimate the enrollment we're going to have in these five years or four years. And then it's supposed to be twenty-five-hundred way back then, but then every year we were given the CPI growth percentage to increase the per-student rate. So then you can calculate it out, instead of forty-eight-point-nine in two thousand and twenty-five, it's only thirty-seven-point-eight and forty-one-point-eight, forty-five, forty-six-point-five, fifty-two-point-three, instead of seven, seventy-three-point-six. So it's much, much less the ability to collect the levy. So I just round it up to thirty-eight-point-five, forty-two, forty-seven, and fifty-two-point-five. So look at the last column of the estimate levy rate. Again, I conservatively using forty, fourteen-point-six percent AV growth. We don't know what percentage going to grow for next year, but I'm just assuming that, you know, we're more conservative. So if we use that estimation, then your levy rate will be one-dollar-ninety-seven cents per one-thousand assets value based on the student count instead of two-dollar-fifty. So on and on until the end of this cycle, it will be about one-dollar-seventy-eight. Again, as your assets value go up, your tax rate is going down. That is the very simple graph, that, I mean, the pictures you can remember all the time. Assets value go, tax rate is down. It's very easy to remember, so I think the picture will help us. Give you some example, again, this is estimate. Let's say if you have a five-hundred-thousand dollars house, and as you saw that the one-dollar-ninety-seven cents rate in two thousand and twenty-five, and then you calculated out a year, you would pay nine-hundred-eighty-five dollars a year and eighty-two dollars a month. And that's what it is. So this is, again, renewing the existing retiring levy that you always pay every year. Same thing, you continue paying it the same way you do now. Technology levy is a little bit different. Technology levy is a little bit different calculation. Again, I use the same assumption as the forty fourteen point six percent. Levy asset value growth. But the district's asking each year for six point five millions for six years. Every use the same amount. Then it generate the rate, estimate rate is point three three per one thousand asset value. That means that we pay a hundred sixty five dollars in twenty twenty five. If that is all the assumptions giving us correct. Then fourteen dollars a month. And as you go on again, asset value go up, raise going down, pay less. That's how it works. So this is example of our projected rate. As you see that I I I use this mark pressing from ESC. One twelve for some of the Bonny Lake School District's history and the projected rate in the future. You can see the green color. Green color is our EPNO. So in the past, you can collect to like twenty four percent level it. Even some of them grandfather in the north. Twenty eight percent level it. Do you remember that? So after that two thousand nineteen, the levy swap and the McCleary. We can only limit to collect. Certain dollars. So we can see that the green colors reducing and it start flash out over the years. The yellow colors is our technology levy, which is very small out of that three dollar eighty cents. And then the blue color is the bond money that the existing bond that we are paying off every year. So we're getting smaller and smaller and it will expire or of pay off to the end of, I think it's twenty thirty seven. That is the last year. So this is Dr. Dan's favorite. In the past, because the SS value is not at high and our rate is the highest. Among this group in Pierce County. And now no more, we are even lower and lower. Again, SS value pay off the bond. And collect less in the levy. So that's why we are no longer the winner. That's not a good one as a winner, but it was. So we talk about the election time. As you see the statistic here and the history, when people run levies and bond. And what is the turnout rate or passing rate? So majority of people focus on February. When February was not successful, they jump to maybe April or August. Because the longer you wait, you have last chance for the second time. To run if you failed the first one, that's why people would like to do it in February, to avoid that hassle. So that's the history and show us the election timing. This is our timeline, if we run in February two thousand twenty four. We have to determine the levy amount, which is today, I presenting to you, that is the dollar amount that I'm going to ask. And the year of collections, four years in EPNO and tech levies, six years. And I also estimate the levy rate that as you see it in this presentation. So we already done this, we are ahead of the schedule. And then follow up, we will have to submit. The expenditure plan for what to, I mean, what kind of activity, what kind of expenditure we are using this levy. Then we will have to submit to the OSBI for approval. After the approval, then we are able to send the board for a resolution. Then once we get that resolution approved, then we will file with the county. And we have the voters' pamphlet explanations. Explanatory statement and we appoint the for and against committee members. That will be in December two thousand twenty three. So have any question?
I'm just gonna reiterate that tonight is really just about starting the conversation about two levies. That need to take place in eight months. We don't ever want you to be surprised and we want to give you plenty of time as a board to consider what's in front of you. To have conversations as a board during study sessions with Bang, with myself, with our team. So tonight is just to start. Really helping you think about what's in front of us and what we need to accomplish to maintain the incredible work of this district.
And ask any question that you want to clarify. You will have chance eventually, but right now it's for the board. Yeah, we will, we will transparent, yeah.
I have a couple of questions and then or comments and then I'll do one at a time so that we. Everyone has a chance to ask something. So Bang, you weren't here when we passed the tech levy last time.
No.
And there was a reason why we chose six years as opposed to four years. Traditionally, from my understanding, the tech levy is still kind of relatively new. But we've always kind of done a capital project, or I'm sorry, EPNO levy every four years. But the reason why we did the six years for the.
Tech levy.
Yeah, for the tech levy was because there was questions over the funding for the McCleary Act was coming up. And so we did two years for the EPNO. And then sure enough, the rules changed for the during the McCleary decision. So then we came back and asked for a four year to get them back on the same cycle. So I'm hoping we can keep them on the same cycle of four years, that's what my hope is.
My my understanding why go with six years is because Kyle and his team put together a plan. Just like they present to you previously, that Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. And if we want to accomplish all those, then probably six year will be the ideal. To finish all the project that he put it all up on those plans. Yeah.
So when it comes to the technology levies. And just both of the levies you're talking about, obviously, good news for taxpayers that with the switch. The enrollment versus the asset value, they're gonna see a lower tax rate. Of course, that presents a challenge for you as a CFO to make sure that we still can get all the things we need to get done. And I just want to point out that things on the tech levy that are just super important to our students are our one to one chromebook ratio. We're one of the only districts around that have that for every single student. You know, security systems and our abilities to keep the kids safe. You know, the list goes on and on, so these these levies are important, you know, levies for learning and bonds for building. But I'm I'm excited to see the list that Kyle put together and presented to us at a previous meeting. I thought that it had a lot of good things in it. And then to to Ms. McLemmon's question, it was, there is public time in that process that public will get to weigh in on that. Be part of the committees, help decide what goes in and what things we're gonna actually spend money on, so definitely everybody gets involved.
Good, thanks for that clarification. What I have is really actually more of a comment. And so many years back, when I was the co-chair for the committee. And we were trying to build Bonnie Lake High School, which was really needed. And so we did both a levy, a tech levy and the bond for building. And they didn't pass the first time and I was, I just couldn't even believe it. Cause we worked so, so hard. And then we did it the next time around, we got the the two levies, still didn't get the bond, the third time. The next year we did get the bond. And I think a lot of that is that I just don't think the public understands. The need for the funding from those, particularly the levies. But the bond, I mean, if we hadn't built Bonnie Lake High School. I don't know what we would have done, really. And it's not that I'm promoting it to all of you, but I will tell you. When those things don't pass, it can be very detrimental for a school district. We need that money in order to run them, so L is for learning, B is for building. It's a good, good reminder.
So far luckily, we have a little bit fund balance that we can spend on. A lot of project that supposed to use bond money, but we do not have. But this one time money would not last and it come to the end after we allocate it to those projects. So we really need the bond. First, we need the levy for sure, absolutely, this levy, we need it, yes.
I'm back. I think it is good news that the levy rate is going down, however, it still means taxes are going up. When your assessments go up, your taxes go up, that's generally how it works. That's why people have deep questions about it. I'm just gonna come back because I, you weren't here the last discussion when we we did this. But so I'm throwing it out again for board discussion, hopefully. And that is the the, when they changed all the funding structure. The term they use in the law now is educational enrichment levy, not educational programs and operations levy. That is an old term. And while. The technical educational enrichment levy does provide about twenty four percent of our budget, somewhere around there, right? What's the percentage?
Right now is eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent.
We get less.
So it's a very large amount and it would be very difficult to to function with a eighteen percent haircut, should it not pass. But the technical legal term for this levy is educational enrichment levy. And when we go out and we name it as educational programs and operation levy. And basically, you know, say, oh, sky's falling if it doesn't pass. I think still we should say, hey, it's the educational enrichment levy. And yeah, the sky still might fall if it doesn't pass, but be upfront with what what it's. What the legislature has set this levy aside for and how we spend our money. I don't think it does it a good service to the district to, or you know, the taxpayers on the whole to call it an old name. And I I get it, I've heard the arguments that, well, people are familiar with this name, they're not familiar with that name. So educate them, but be upfront about it. That's how I think our district should handle it, so. Yeah.
Used to be M and O, maintenance and operation.
So I rest my case, we can change the name and people still get it.
Right, well, basically, when the McCleary's time. As much they want to say fully funded and basic ed. Paul, you know that you are the one advocate for special ed. And I can tell you that next month, I'm presenting to you the twenty three, twenty four budget. You will see how much money we expect to collect for special ed and how much we spend. Million dollars differences that we spend more than we collect. And transportation is the same situation.
And again, I.
Right.
I don't dispute any of that, Bang, I I think they grossly underfund special education. And then when we have to go back hat in hand and beg for, you know, hey, we we spent three million dollars more than you gave us. And they say, oh, okay, well, here's a million and a half.
Yeah.
Well, we still end up eating a bunch.
Still, yeah.
And that's, that money comes directly out of this educational enrichment levy, which is destined for the classrooms. And so again, I think the public's pretty smart if we call it what it is. And then go to bat and say, hey, they're supposed to be fully funding education, but we have to use this educational enrichment levy. To pay what the state should be paying. Instead, when we call it educational programs and operations levy, it sounds like it's, well, it's for operations. What it's really, you know, instead of being able to say, no, it's really for enrichment stuff over and above what the state pays for. But the state doesn't pay enough.
Right, so, yeah. Yep, any other question? Thank you.
Thank you, Bang. Okay, the next presentation is Human Resources and Student Services with David Bauer. And I'll have you introduce Adrian, yes, thank you. And Robert, yes.
Well, good evening, Dr. Dan, members of the school board. It is my pleasure to be here with the Human Resource Leadership Team as we present some highlights of the work we've been doing. And I will be joined by Adrian Chacon and Robert Gallagher. Who remind me daily that we can't spell art without HR and so. Come on, what's good? Okay, I won't quit my day job. So as we hit some highlights, like all departments, our work is deeply rooted in our promise. We know that. Every, in order for every student to be known, valued and supported, they have to have the best staff. And every staff member that's hired, their first stop is human resources and we're that first hello. And so we are grateful to be able to focus on that work. This year, we focused on two operational goals as a department and you see them written on your screen there. The first is really about the hiring practices. With the goal of making sure that we decrease the timeline. Because the longer it takes to hire somebody, the longer a student is waiting for services. And the more frustration that people feel in that process. And the second one is really around equity and increasing the percentage of highly qualified cert staff that more accurately mirror our student demographics. Because we know that students need to see themselves in the staff that support them. Our work is deeply guided by the strategic plan from the operational infrastructure that you see there on the screen. To those operational or to the academic goals that we have. We know that as a district, the most important thing that we have impact on. Is the staff that we hire, that's that most important lever that we have impact on. And so those staff that we hire. Make sure that we can meet goals one through five from early learning through graduation. And as we talk about graduation, we see ourselves in our work, not only in the academic goals. But really in that portrait of a graduate, not just because the staff we hire that helped those kids graduate. But we're really excited about much of the work we're doing in partnership with other departments. With our teacher academy that prepares our own students to become par educators and teachers. As well as hiring student interns and our team's gonna be talking a little bit about that later. Where in through this work in our district, they. Practice becoming globally conscious members of society as well as those other critical areas. Now often people think of HR and they think of compliance and we see this not just about compliance, but as a way to provide guardrails. And safety for all of our staff and students to interact in positive ways and we highlight some of those policies. That we work with on a daily basis from the five thousand series, which is all about human resources. Including those three thousand series ones about student and staff interaction. So it's my pleasure to introduce Robert Gallagher, who's going to talk about who we are and what we do.
All right, well, thank you for that, David. Who we are and what what we do in in HR. As a district, we have eleven employees in our department that we're very proud of and all the hard work that they do. What we're responsible for is recruiting, hiring, onboarding and retaining staff. And we serve, you know, one thousand four hundred and eighty two ongoing employees in our district. We processed over five hundred and forty job requests and three hundred and fifty eight recommendations this year. Which is a big part of what we do. On the next part here of what we do and who we are, one of the things to really think about, it's it's we in HR. We also maintain and approve nearly two thousand volunteers within our schools. Every year that's maintained and updated, so there's approximately two thousand. So there's approximately 2,000. We partner with our labor groups to ensure competitive wages and favorable working conditions that help us create and manage our agreements and handbooks for our nine different employee groups. And we had over 550 extended leave requests this year. It's really important for us as a department to support our staff and making sure that they're able to take leave when they need to, to take care of themselves and take care of their families. And we've seen an increase of up to 16,000 absences this year. So it is a need, and we've worked really hard at trying to get that substitute rate and hiring, and I'll talk about the fill rate later, but really making sure we have enough qualified people in front of our students because our staff deserve that and they need that time for themselves. So this past year, we hired 374 new employees to our district, which is, which is good in all different areas. We've had teachers, paras, bus drivers, and of course, the important one, the substitutes. We added 105 new substitutes this year to our substitute pool, and 34 athletic coaches and paid and volunteers. So one of the things to notice on this one here is, as our district has grown over the years, and nine years ago, we hired 75 new people. And now, over nine years, we are hiring 374 this year. So that is a significant increase. But with that is also looking at what's important is, as we have grown, we have also maintained our very high retention rate of our staff. Over the past nine years, we have a 93.07% retention rate of staff, which is exceptionally high for any school district. It doesn't matter what size you are. That is a very high retention rate, and that speaks to the quality of our staff and the relationship with our community and the relationship and partnership with our, with our district, with everybody. So that's a very high rate. And this is just a graph that basically, for visual learners, it shows you the same things that I just talked about. The little chart of as we've grown, we've hired more. And of course, when you hire more, you get bigger, you're going to have more separations. But that high percentage rate of retention has remained throughout the whole process. So in Goal 1, we looked at analyzing, review hiring practices and timelines and optimize fill rates for vacancies for each labor group. One of the things that we're really proud of this year was we really took a look at our timelines and how can we increase our efficiency to get people in front of students faster? And so we've really took a look at removing barriers to that. We have increased our processing time for certified staff. We've reduced it by 28% from when we started at the start of the year. Up until now, it's now 28% more faster getting those people through our HR process, while still in making sure that all those safety protocols and procedures are still in place. We removed some of those barriers. We've worked with our transportation department. We go up to transportation to help our bus drivers get their paperwork done, get it expedited, get them into the system because we all know we need bus drivers. So we really work hard with that. We use pool positions. We've entered into, you know, agreements to streamline coaching hiring. Like, we're focusing on everything of our streamline. So it was one of our big goals here was to make sure that we did that. The other part of this was also looking at fill rates and things like that. And as David mentioned earlier, we needed to really look at, how can we get people in front of students faster? And how can we get those teachers locked up and coming committed to our districts? One of the things we really worked on this year was increased the use of our letters of intent for certificated candidates. So when we were off at job fairs and recruitment fairs, we get that cream of the crop teacher who is saying, "Hey, I want to come to your district." We could say, "Well, you know what we've got for you? A letter of intent." It's an agreement between the district and that teacher to come here. And there's nothing quite as exciting as that first-year teacher signing that intent or a veteran teacher at a job fair who has lost their job in another district. And we're able to say, "You know what? We're hiring." And that is a good thing to be able to say, that we're in a good financial spot to hire and to attract and get new people into our district. And with that, I will turn it over to my compadre, Adrian.
Good evening. As David mentioned earlier, our second goal is around increasing the percentage of highly qualified certificated staff to more accurately mirror the diverse cultures and ethnicities of our current student population. Studies show that not just students of color do better when they see a more diverse staff. We know that it also provides exposure to different upbringings and perspectives for all students and staff. Further, furthering critical thinking procedures, processes that we know are so important for our students, giving opportunities to see different perspectives, to have conversations around the differences in a positive way that helps people to make up, especially our students, to make up their own minds about what they truly believe and bringing in their own family histories and what they've been taught as a family, to share with other people, to celebrate the differences as we come together as a community. We have also provided some affinity groups. We've had our first meeting this year. For those of you that don't know, an affinity group is educators of color coming together to share experiences and offer supports to each other. We really want to focus on not just the hiring, but the retention of the people that we have in our district. So how are we analyzing what our district provides? How do we support and help people to understand that this is a community that thrives because we care about all of our people? And so we want to take care of the individual needs of our staff as well as our students. And then constantly analyzing and removing any barriers. We know that a lot of times, there are, our biggest focus is to hire the best staff for our kids, no matter who they are. But we have to stop and look at what are some of those barriers that we may actually be putting up as a system that may stop them from getting into the door just to get a job in our district? They may be taking jobs in other places. So how are we as a district looking and reflecting to make sure that we're supporting all? This is just a little breakdown for you to look at about where we're at. It talks a little bit of how we've grown over the past few years, so 2018, 2020, and 2022. I do want to highlight the first one there, and that's kind of a national trend. When you look at the difference of male-to-female ratio, we've got a 21.7% male percentage and a 78.3% female. That's part of that area that we want to focus on as well. We know that our boys need to see men in positions as in their educational experiences as well. I want to highlight some of those different areas. We still have a lot of work to go. This is the reality of where we're at. But when you take a look at some of those, our Asian educators have increased along with our two or more races as well. So it's a good start for us. And this is just another way for you to look at it, pie charts. The one on the left side is our student body makeup. The one on the right is our certificated staff. Just for you to see that we recognize the fact, this is a current snapshot. We definitely have some work to continue. As you can see, we just want to make sure that our focus, again, is on hiring those most, the best candidates for our students. They deserve the best education possible. So how are we looking at that and providing opportunities for them to potentially come to Sumner Bonnie Lake where they didn't necessarily know that was a possibility before? So let's talk about what's working well. We love that. Again, we're constantly looking at our hiring practices. How can we better improve our, our processes to increase the ability to hire some of those positions that have not necessarily been filled prior to that? We definitely want to talk about our student interns. Oh, my goodness, we love them so much. 17 student interns, both for the technology department and for our custodial department. That was something new this year that we did because we were having a hard time hiring custodians. And so hiring students that could support in those hard-to-fill positions, while at the same time also providing job readiness opportunities for them and support, supporting those hard-to-fill jobs. It's been wonderful to take a look at some of the students, and they're so proud of the work that they're doing and the staff that they're working for and supporting, talk so highly of them. They're just, it's such a wonderful opportunity to see. We're also partnering with the Teacher Academy and CTE. We had an amazing celebration a couple of weeks ago just talking to the students and sharing a little bit about their impact on the younger students that they're working with. They are, they are the new mentors for our young students to see what the possibilities are as a career in education and the difference they can make. And then we also shared with them that we want them, if they're still in the neighborhood next year, if they're going to college, working part-time, maybe they're taking classes online, if they wanted to come back and work for us as a paraeducator or in, as a classified position. And then when they do graduate, if they decided to go into education, we have guaranteed them an interview as a teacher in our district to get them back. We want them to come back and help the community grow. We are doing a lot of in-person trainings, especially around coaches and staff, staff-to-student interactions. As the closure has finished up, we're excited to be able to have that face-to-face conversation, just make sure that we're focusing on the importance of what those guidelines are and the policies and how we can really be as clear as possible on expectations for our staff. And then we've definitely been doing some partnerships with our classified leadership, trying to look at different ways to do, to get the word out there and just making sure that people understand that we want them here. We know that that one-to-one and that community voice is the best way to hire people. So we're just constantly trying to grow in that one. And then I wanted to share a cute little picture that we have, one of our student interns who's been amazing at the middle school. Like I said, we hear so much positive feedback from staff and other students who really want to get into this program. So we're hoping that this is something that's going to continue to grow. This is our certificated substitute fill rate. Just to give you a little idea of what you're looking at, the green represents last year's fill rate by month. Oh, excuse me, the blue, I'm colorblind. And then the red is the, this year's. And take a look at the difference month by month. And we're so excited to share that that black line that goes across the top, that's actually the average fill rate for our neighboring districts. So when you look at that compared to how we're doing, we're doing pretty good. And we actually had people reaching out from other districts asking, "What are you guys doing? How is that happening?" So sharing a little bit about some of our secrets has been nice. We're in demand, thank you. It is, it's exciting. And then again, focusing on recruiting sources. We have a new resource that we're using this year. David's going to come and present those to you. We have little business cards that we created with QR codes that go directly to our application page. We've come to hiring fairs with them, and it's wonderful. People are so excited to be able to apply right there with us. And we have more copies in the back of the room. Again, we know, looking at this, this is information that we've collected from people that apply. When you look at how do people learn about the jobs? Look at that. Community members, employees, board members, 35% of the people say that's how they find out about the jobs in our district. So please feel free to take some of those cards, hand them to your friends. We are definitely looking to fill some of our classified positions for next year as well. And you're the way that we reach out to them. So partnership, we love it. One of the other areas that I want to talk about is we've actually been partnering with some of our labor partners. They've been helping us to get the word out on their hiring boards. They've been supporting us by possibly doing some internal growth within specific areas to get people ready to go to a next-level job as well for the classified side. So that's, that's a great partnership that we've been looking at. Now, opportunities for improvement. We have to be very real about where we're at and where the areas of growth are. We know that our paraeducator substitutes are definitely an area of growth for us and a focus for next year. The purple bars are last year's fill rate, and then the green ones are this year's fill rate. Compared to our cert subs, this is significantly lower. However, when you look at it month by month, you're seeing growth. November, December, that's the holiday season. We know some people don't want to work necessarily. Well, there's so many holidays those months. But if you take a look at that, we're definitely seeing growth. But again, a focus area for next year will be to increase those numbers for us, the fill rates.
You want to talk still? Oh, I know you will. So again, with opportunities for improvement, as Adrian has mentioned, you know, classified hiring in general is an area for growth for, for our department. We're really working on Grow Your Own. And what Grow Your Own is, is taking opportunities for students, paras, to look at opportunities to grow into other positions. Teachers into administrators, paras into teachers, students into paras in those types of positions and custodial work and all of those things. We're trying to grow our own through our system. Next year, we're going to be partnering with the University of Washington to support our paras to become teachers. We're going to have a partnership arrangement with them to help that work. The other thing we're looking at is also, again, taking down some of those barriers and hiring and management system software. If you've ever been on our, we apologize if you've ever been on our job site. We're working on getting new platforms that are much more user-friendly. So we do apologize for that ahead of time. And the last part of our presentation here from our department is, you know, we truly believe that the impacts on student performance. So this past Monday, we celebrated graduation. And what we believe here in HR is that every student who graduate is supported by HR through the staff that we hire, train, and support. And we know that our staff make a difference in the lives of our students. And we want everyone to be up there at that graduation moment. So thank you, and I will pass it back over to David.
All right, thank you, team. Is there any questions from the board?
Comment, David. I know you've been here a couple of years now. This is the first time I have received a report like this and a presentation like this. And I've been here almost seven years. This was so new to me, I'm kind of at a loss for some of the questions. Truly, give me a couple of days, though. I liked that you had the bar graphs on there to show us where you were last year and the improvement of this year. I liked it, it was a great presentation. I do have a question, though, and that is, for bus drivers, custodial workers, I know we've, you know, done the interns for custodial workers. They kind of help, wish the kids could drive a bus, maybe, but. But anyway, how are we doing on those areas? Because those, those are a big concern.
Yeah, so that does continue to be a focus. You see that in our presentation, we did hire 26 bus drivers this year. We continue to focus on that. Our team has went up and worked very closely with Pam Knapp and with Dr. Ahmed in analyzing where our bottlenecks were. And so we made some significant changes this year that have really helped us hiring bus drivers. One of the things is we shifted, shifted to paying for training. We already paid for their CDL, their commercial driver's license, but often they weren't, couldn't afford to take that six weeks of training unpaid. And so we implemented training pay for that. We also looked at streamlining the hiring of substitutes for, to be bus drivers. And one of the things we just have done is they're going to go through the full orientation as substitutes, so that when they complete the CDL, they can immediately transition to being a full-time bus driver without having to have any additional barriers. So that was something that we looked at. Also, we were proud of the work that was done with our labor partners to make sure we had competitive wages, and that made a huge difference. So we continue to do that, and the same thing with custodial. So it is one of those things, it is not just a Sumner Bonnie Lake challenge. It is a regional and nationwide shortage. But I think as we look, we have shown promising growth. So we're going to keep chipping away at that and eating that elephant.
This is kind of a question, and it's more of a, in HR, you guys are dealt with situations that are out of your control sometimes. Due to laws, due to employees that do get sick and need to take long-term leaves of absence. Sometimes for paternity or maternity leave, they take these leaves of absence. Could you tell us a little bit about what the goal is to find a good replacement when there's that leave of absence? And I ask this question because I have a personal story. My daughter had a history class, and halfway through the year, just a little after the semester time, the teacher took his paternity leave, and she got a substitute. She didn't learn too much after that substitute came in. I don't know if the substitute had an emergency substitute certificate, but as a parent, I wasn't really happy. Fortunately, I have a history background, so it wasn't the end of the world for my student. But however many students there were in that class, they might not have had the best educational experience. And so the question then is, what lengths are you guys doing to make sure there's a match for a long-term substitution?
I appreciate that. I think one of the things that we're doing is starting early. As soon as we know that a leave is coming, is beginning to work with the principal to find a suitable replacement. We're also working with instructional services to identify who that, once we identified who that substitute is, to make sure that they can get trained and get access to the curriculum. Because again, you may have a great knowledge in history, but if you don't know our curriculum, it's going to be challenging. So it really is about those partnerships. And so, and again, it's about recruiting. One of the things that I would like to point out that One of the things that I would like to point out, that I think one of the reasons that we have had such a great level of success in our fill rate in general, but then also the quality of subs is we were, we surveyed our subs and we said, what makes you want to come here? And what makes you want to go back to certain buildings? Number one answer? The way we're treated. Not shocking. And so we talked about what does that look like and what does that mean? And so the admin secretaries got together and they shared ideas. Here's what we do at our building and here's what we do. And when parents were coming in, parents, some of the same parents were coming in every day and saying, hey, can I help out? Can I help out? Sure. Tell us about your education and training. You might want to talk to HR. You could actually be paid for coming and helping out. And so that all helps increase our sub pool. So it's really about small and simple things done consistently and repeatedly with intentional partnerships with the other departments.
I think your report shows that and I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, information only. You can find this in your packets, but it's the 2223 highly capable report. And so you can go ahead and check on that in your leisure time. Next up, we have board discussion. Does anybody have any discussion at this time?
No, I think just all the highlights we did at the beginning were really what I wanted to focus on tonight is just all the good stuff that's happening.
Exactly. Now, pretty lucky that way. Paul?
Yep. I see an executive session after here, so I'll give everybody a break.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the announcement of the next regular meeting, which is Wednesday, July 12th, which would commence at 6:00 PM in the office or in the building we're in right now. And other than that, we have an adjournment. We'll go right into an exec session. Thank you for joining us and have a good evening.
Ticket card, or?
Yes. It's not a credit card.